And we are recording.
Thank you. Everybody ready? All right, let's get started this evening. Good evening. This is the Swamaco Village Board meeting for Monday, May 15th. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. At this time, I would look for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
I would offer a motion to approve the agenda with one change, moving item 10 in its entirety to between number six, consent agenda, and number seven, planning and zoning items.
Thank you. We have a motion by trustee Rodden to move item number 10. Item number 10, Resolution 23017, awarding the sale of $1,260,000 general obligation promissory notes to, just after the consent agenda, and we have a second by trustee Schneider. Is there any further discussion or questions on this?
Just the reasoning is, we have a gentleman in the audience that came from Milwaukee for just that item. It could be a longer meeting, and I thought it'd be appropriate to move it up so you can get back on the road.
Very good. Trustee Romes, did you have a comment?
That was an ask, that's fine.
Excellent. Any other further comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Item number five, public appearances. At this time, anyone in the audience who's here to address an issue not on the agenda, if you would come forward, share your name and address, speak clearly as we're recording this, let us know what's on your mind. Again, items not on the agenda. Anyone? Okay. Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening consists of previous minutes of the village board dated 5/1/2023, the April 2023 municipal court record, report rather, the item C, April 2023 Fire Department Report, and item D, April 2023 Recreation Report. Is there any questions or discussions with regard to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
It's fine.
You sure?
Well, there was part of it. I guess the fire, the firemen were at a May Day celebration, and that scared me a little because that sounds a little communist. But I'm assuming it wasn't that.
It was at Vicry Village, man. They're reds. They had red trucks.
Yeah, it was in Vicry Village. They had their May Day celebration.
And it was not communist.
No, I was not there personally, but no, it was not.
Excellent.
I've been to the May Day celebration at Vicry Village, and it's tremendous.
Okay.
Great music and food and everything.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve this evening's agenda. Was there a second?
There was.
Thank you. So trustee Rodden threw the motion out there to approve this evening's consent agenda. It was seconded by trustee Romes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. At this time, we'll move on to item number 10. Item number 10 is finance department item, Resolution 2301, awarding the sale of $1,260,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2023A, providing the forms of the notes and the levying a tax in connection therewith. Director Maga.
Yes, the sale of the note took place today, this morning. And Todd Taves from Ellers is here, and he has handed out to you the sale report that he's going to go over to let you know how well the sale went.
Thank you, Kay. So there's a cover and then two pages of narrative. I'm going to skip right past that and go to the sheet that Alex has up on the screen, which is the bids that you received. So a total of six. These were received competitively at 10 o'clock this morning. The winning underwriter was Baird, along with all the other various financial institutions listed in the packet. And we award this based on the true interest rate. So the true interest rate on the bid was 3.16%, and the bids ranged all the way up to 3.57%, which is one of the reasons we recommend offering your debt for competitive sale. The other thing I would mention on this page is the, if you look at the price, this underwriter was willing to pay 1.3 million for 1.26 million worth of notes. So what that signifies is what we refer to as a premium bid, meaning that if you, again, this is not the exact same exhibit that Alex has up in the packet. The rate is the interest rate that you will actually pay. The reoffering yield is the effective rate. So for example, that 2024 maturity will pay bondholders a 5% interest rate, but in order to get that 5% interest rate, they had to buy that bond for more than its face value, such that it offers, or net, say 3.15%. So that additional cash that's paid above and beyond the face value of the bond, that is a credit essentially to the transaction, and we'll see that on the next page. So the page that has the columns in yellow, the sizing sheet. So the first column, we're at pre-sale estimate. That's what we reviewed at the first meeting last month. The sale results column then is the difference. And the thing I would point out here is, again, if you look at that reoffering premium line about halfway down, once we made the adjustments to the structure, it was a credit of roughly $52,000 to the transaction. By state statute, we have to put about $40,000 in the debt service fund that will be used to pay most of the interest that will be due next year. Cost of issuance were also a little bit less. So all told, we were able to reduce the issue from $1,260,000 to $1,240,000. So importantly, you're getting the same amount for projects that you need, but we're issuing less bonds to do that. So when you do make the motion, an appropriate motion would be to award the notes in the amount of $1,240,000, and your bond attorney did provide an updated resolution this afternoon based on the actual bid results. The fold-out sheet then is the actual principal and interest repayment schedule. Again, this is in the context of your existing debt on the left, and also takes into consideration the trust fund loan for the wetland mitigation bank project, and then also a planned general obligation note that will finance other projects out in the year 2025. But the numbers we care about today are, again, in the yellow. So this is the final principal and interest schedule. Interest is a total of $222,000, but again, part of that premium, about $40,000, will be deposited into the TID fund and will offset a portion of that first year's interest payment. When we roll all that together at the bottom of those columns, we had estimated roughly six weeks ago when we presented this that the total principal and interest would be 1.43 million. The actual sales results today will yield total principal and interest. That's about $12,000 less than the estimate. The last exhibit then is the TID cash flow. Again, these notes are financing the sewer extension project in TID number one. And I put the actual debt service payments in that yellow column. And what we really care about on this exhibit is that very far right-hand column. We want to know that the TID will be capable of servicing this debt and that you will not, even though it's general obligation, not a debt be required to levy for it. And so what this shows in that far right column is we're projecting that the TID will maintain a positive fund balance throughout the remaining life, indicating that, in fact, as long as the value holds roughly where it is and the tax rate holds roughly where it is, that you will be able to offset all of the payments due with the tax increment. The last item that's attached, just for your reference, is a copy of the Moody's credit report. So when we issue public market debt, we go through a process where we have a call with Moody's. They assign a credit rating. The village's credit rating was upgraded actually back in December, January timeframe. So this was no change to that, but it is an increase from where you were six months ago. So the village did move up at that time from a AA3 to a AA2. The one thing I would mention in this report that I think is kind of concise and interesting is if you go to the page number 12 at the bottom, there is a table called Rating Methodology and Scorecard Factors. So they, most of the rating is based on a numeric methodology where they run audited financial results. And if you look at that far right-hand column, score, so where it says AAA, that means that your metrics in that area exceed your AA peer group. Where it says AA, you're consistent with your peer group, and where it's A, you're below your peer group. So the only one that the village is below is the one you really have little control over, and that's that economic growth metric. And that economic growth metric is not based on the village itself. It's based on the regional economy as well as the statewide economy as compared to the rest of the nation. So overall, Wisconsin has a lower economic growth metric than other areas. So all this is to say is that the village is doing very well in all the areas that you can control. And if you look at the very bottom where it says scorecard indicated outcome, just based solely on the metrics, you actually score as a AA1, which is even a notch higher. Normally, Moody's is somewhat slow to give upgrades, so they left it at the AA2. But this says, again, you're doing quite well, and you're actually skewing even towards a higher rating. So just wanted to point that out because I thought that was a very solid credit report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have before you consider the resolution.
This report is actually really interesting. You know, when we look at the economy and the scorecard and we look at resident income ratio, you know, I look at the trend, 18, 19, 20 on page nine, at the top of page nine. We see a trend down in 2021. Is, can you explain that one item real quick of the differences each year? And what does that equate to?
You're looking at the resident income ratio?
Yeah, so is that an income ratio to what? To the median?
I think it actually defines it on the last page. So in the appendix, it is the median household income for the city or county adjusted for regional price parity as a percentage of the US MHI.
Okay.
So how that mathematically is done, I couldn't tell you without doing some research on that. But the thing to note is in that far right-hand column on that table, the median for a AA is 115%. So, you know, whether you were 174% in 2019 or 163, it's, you know, more than, you know, more than 150% obviously of the baseline, so very, very, again, strong metric.
I mean, that percentage, that percentage slip was, what, three tenths of 1%?
Right.
Right, but, I mean, year over year, it looks like it's trending down except for 18 and 19.
Okay. Are there other questions?
Just one quick one. Is there a prepayment penalty for these sorts of things?
So the, this issue, and this is the case with all municipal bond issues, they have a period where you cannot prepay.
Okay.
And then when you get to the last three years, you have the option to prepay in part or in full or refinance at any point thereafter.
Okay.
And then as far as the interest, Kay, the interest that's accrued will be broken out by entity? Or is this all just for?
This is all just for Easterfield Project.
Okay, so that interest then that's accumulated will be paid by the TID. Absolutely.
Frisble and interest will be paid by TID increment.
I think that's important to note, that the village isn't covering that, that the TID is.
Paying for it.
Correct.
I agree.
I think we got a very favorable interest rate.
I'd agree. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23017, awarding the sale of two point, or I'm sorry, 1.24 million general obligation promissory notes, Series 2023A, providing the form of the notes and levelling a tax in connection therewith.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor from trustee Rodden to approve the Resolution 23017 for $1,240,000. And we have a second by trustee Schneider. Is there any further discussion or questions on this item?
Do a roll call, please.
It's, yeah, it's got to be a little call. Madam clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Absolutely. Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Netto.
Aye.
Trustee Rodden.
Aye.
Trustee Romes.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
President Van Rossum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Well, thank you, and I really appreciate you taking me out of order. It wasn't necessary, but very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stay fit back.
Have a good night.
All right. Moving on, let's go back to item number seven, planning and zoning items. These will be for zoning administrator dunks. Item A, requested by Big Sky Real Estate for final plat approval for the Sheedy Farms located on parcel SU 692 on the southeast corner of Westline Road and West Point Road. Zoning Administrator Dunks, take it away.
Thank you. The primary plat was approved with 22 lots back on April 3rd. At this time, they're going to do a phased plat through here, so they're only doing eight lots along West Point Road, about 10.27 acres in total. A stormwater plan still needs to be completed and approved by village staff. All lots at this time do appear to meet the requirements of rural residential zoning. Sewer and water service is not available at this time, and no plans have been made for any extensions of those services. Page two does include restrictive covenants, which all appear to restrict building requirements beyond what Swamaco zoning code is. We believe these should be a separate filed document and not part of the plat. I believe they're part of the plat. We actually are responsible for enforcing that. And when it's different than our zoning code, it just becomes very complicated from one subdivision to the other. We'd like to keep them all consistent. Parkland fees of $300 per lot would be required at the signing of the final plat. Currently, that would be $2,400. A developer agreement will not, likely not be needed prior to the signing of the final plat, as they're not doing the road at this time. The original approval did require a developer's agreement, but that was for the construction of the extension of Prestine Lane. We're not expecting any stormwater facilities as part of this phase. If that was required, then they would have to have the developer's agreement for that. I don't believe the final wetland determination has been completed. We, staff will need to verify that the buildable area does meet code and frontage will remain accessible after that delineation and brown county ESAs are in place. Planning Commission recommendation was for approval with the five listed conditions, restrictive covenants on page two filed as a separate document, completion and approval of a stormwater plan, completion of the wetland determination, and verification of all related code requirements, and meeting the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Looks like E doesn't really belong in there. Thank you.
Well, my concern continues to be the density. These lots are getting to be pretty dense. They're so dense, you might end up on Pittsfield Water and Sewer. Might happen someday.
They do meet your code requirements, so.
Yeah, trustee Eckert and I echo that. You know, we had a lot of conversation, I shouldn't say a lot, some conversation on the planning and zoning, just about lot sizes in general. That's going to be a future agenda item for that commission to start off with and then bring it to the board level. You know, there's a little bit of goofiness. This isn't too far from Anson Road where it's required to be 1.5?
North of Anson Road is required to be two acres.
Two acres. Sorry, I was good. Yeah, two acres. So, you know, here you're a block away or a block, you know, an eighty away from Anson Road. But they meet all the current requirements, and so, you know, you can't stop. You can raise concern, and we both have, and I think several of us have, about lot sizes, but they meet the requirements. And I understand why they do it. I mean, it's all about dollars and cents, maximize profit on these lots. So I understand it. There's nothing in our current code that can change that.
So what's the smallest you can have there?
Right there, 1.15.
50,000 square feet.
So they're essentially at basically the smallest they can get.
So in terms of changing this, the reason that this is, we've kind of got our hands a little bit tied on this from the standpoint that our comprehensive plan has these details laid out just like this. Going forward, when we redo our comprehensive plan in 2024?
25. Right now, we're going to start the process in 24 for completion in 25.
So that's the opportunity for us to make those changes in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, and that's one area that I feel kind of strongly about, cleaning that up. I mean, so we don't have these different requirements in different rural areas.
You got to draw the line somewhere.
And I don't disagree, but, I mean, again, this was talked about when the original comprehensive plan was done and this was made into 1.15 acres, it was about water and sewer someday coming out there. And that's not the case. It's not going to be the case.
Well, never say never. Like I said, you probably ended up from Pittsfield at that point because this isn't rural. This, this isn't rural. That's not a rural.
But if you look, so I did do some more looking, and again, this is in my backyard. So I've talked to a lot of the neighbors. I've talked to a lot of people in that subdivision about this because they've, they've come to me to talk. And this is a lot like Autumn Ridge subdivision, where it's a big loop, but most of those lots are in that 1 to, 1.1 to 1.3 acres, so they're all about the same size. And that's still, again, everybody has their opinion on what rural means and what it feels like. But I drove again through that subdivision on my way here today, and it's a nice area. And it still has that, in my opinion, that rural character. Would I like to see these better, bigger? Sure. Would I like to see a little bit more creativity with this whole development? Sure, but there's only so much you can do coming off of Prestine Lane.
Okay. Other questions? Other questions for Mr., for zoning administrator dunks? Otherwise, we can invite Mr. B. Davis here from, it's not now, in Associates anymore, is it? Hugh Becker. Beer, okay, I'll get it right. Are there any questions? Discussion? If there's no questions or discussion?
Just real quick, the only, again, anybody's wondering why this isn't getting the full plot completed. I think they explained that in our last meeting, that they're bankrolling these. When these sell, then they'll have the money to put the road in. Obviously, roads are extremely expensive, so I understand what they're doing.
I'll make the motion to approve the final plat for Sheedy Farms with the following conditions, restrictive covenants on page noted, to be filed on a separate document, completion and approval of stormwater plan, completion of the wetland determination, verification of all related code requirements, and meet the regulations of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
A second.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to recommend approval of the final plat for the Sheedy Farms with the conditions as described by trustee Schneider, and we have a second by trustee Romes. Is there any other further discussion or questions from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six to one.
Have a good night, sir.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item 7B, request by John Henry for a town center overlay district plan approval to allow the construction of a residential garage at 1776 Riverside Drive, located on parcel SU 431 on the north side of Riverside Drive, 350 feet east of Veltb Avenue, in zoned business. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
All right, we are looking at a 0.684 acre parcel here, but a majority of that, or a good portion of that, is not buildable. It's down on the critical slope, heading down towards the river. This is part of your town center overlay district, which was approved many years ago. So it's just basically the site plan approval. Town center overlay is similar to a planned development district. It's just that the plan is already out there on what can and can't be done. It allows for mix, residential and commercial use on a property. This property is zoned business, but they are, that residence has been there pretty much forever. That used to be an old cheese factory. It's now converted to the Paramount Studios on one side, and residential, I believe, is upstairs, or at least on the southwest side of this property. So this garage is for residential purposes. Right now, the residents have nowhere to, they don't have a garage for anything, so this will help clean up the site, get the cars hopefully in the garage, or at least their outdoor equipment. The last renter had quite a accumulation of different, whether it was the canoes, kayaks, fishing boat, whatever, it was all stored outside, and it did get to look pretty cluttered, and Mr. Henry just doesn't like that, which is why he wants to move this garage. What they're asking for is to be about 18 inches off that western property line. Mr. Henry does own the adjacent property. The location does line up pretty good with the driveway cut that's existing today. Moving to the east would likely require modification of that full curb in that location, and it may also affect fire separation requirements between the dwelling and the detached garage. We would like the proposed location limited to an overhang of a maximum of 18 inches. We don't want it to go over that property line at all. So your planning and zoning commission motion was to recommend approval with the maximum overhang on the west side of 18 inches and meeting all other applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies. Thank you.
Is that going to somewhat match its building, or?
Yes, he will have it similar in style to the building that exists.
Can you elaborate on the, it may also affect the fire separation requirements between the dwelling and the garage? And if it does, what's the plan?
No, they moved it to the east.
If they have to, if they have to build it at the 10-foot side yard setback, that would likely create some.
Okay, so that's a downside of not letting them be further west.
Correct, because now if there's any window within there, that window has to be changed out to a fire-rated window or eliminated. You have drywall requirements or fire roofing requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Both inside this garage and inside the dwelling. It gets, it all depends. I don't know what's inside the dwelling right now. Any window would be ugly.
It's good. Thank you.
There's nothing else. I'll make a motion to approve a town center overlay district plan to allow for the construction of a residential garage on parcel SU 431 with the following conditions, maximum overhang on the west side of the garage to be 18 inches, meet the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and reviewing agencies.
I'll second that.
We have a motion on the floor by trustee Rodden to approve the town center overlay district plan to allow for the construction of the residential garage on parcel SU 431 with the conditions as stated. And we have a second on that motion by trustee Romes. Are there any questions or further discussion on this item from the board? Very well. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right. Moving right along. Item 7C, request by John Henry for a town center overlay district plan approval to allow the construction of a covered patio at 1733 Riverside Drive, located on parcel SU 469-1 on the south side of Riverside Drive at Side Street, and this is zoned business. Zoning Administrator Dunks.
Thank you. We're looking at a 0.126 acre parcel here. The existing building is actually the old town offices from way back when. It was yoga hut. It was gray, gray dog textile. Mr. Henry has purchased it from the Wirths. The purpose is to construct a restaurant or turn it into a restaurant to serve Station One Brewery is the main purpose. The individual that's looking to lease this property and do the conversion is actually a co-owner of Station One Brewing. Brewery. Again, it's town center overlay district, which allows for the relaxation of some of this stuff. They're basically looking at putting this right up to the property line. Gives them, what size was that? 16 by 36 covered patio. And again, they would be using it as part of, they wouldn't be serving alcohol in here, but it would be somewhere for Station One Brewing to folks to go over and have a bite to eat or order for carryout and bring it back to Station One and, or have it delivered there, however they want to do that. But we're not looking for any alcohol to be served here. It's just to complement Station One Brewing. Your motion by planning and zoning commission was to recommend approval. No part of the roof structure may go beyond the property line. may go beyond the property line, and then meeting requirements of all our applicable ordinances, regulations, and agencies. Thank you.
So it's, are there tables for eating?
Yeah, there would be tables for eating under-
But no alcohol?
No alcohol.
And it's connected?
Well, it's-
There's a walkway.
There would be a walkway. It's not part of Station One Brewing. The main purpose is to serve. Station One Brewing really doesn't have any food options there. So it's their way of, of keeping the patrons there.
And I think the way they explained it when they came before the zoning commission, where it says new concrete slab aligned with existing on this picture here, kind of that triangle area, they're talking about making like a grassy area. And then off of the, off that corner there to where the slab is for the Station One Brewery, making steps to get into Station One Brewery. Is that correct?
That's basically what, yeah, what they're trying to do.
So it, it makes sense, what they're doing. We didn't have any issues or, it's pretty simplistic.
It's not, not that much different from what they, when they have food trucks that are there.
Right.
Did they happen to mention what kind of food they'll be serving?
No.
Pizza.
Are there, are there any other further questions for zoning administrator Dunks or comments?
Is that on the lot line as it is?
Which, what's that?
Or, there's actually all the buildings. I think we've talked about that before.
The town hall is literally built at the edge of the railroad right of way. Station One Brewing actually goes across that property line. We were very good with our building setbacks when we built our fire station and our town hall, uh, town offices.
We were excellent. I'll make a motion to approve the town center overlay district plan to allow for the construction of a covered patio on parcel SU 469-1 with the following conditions: that no part of the roof structure may be beyond the property line, and that meets the requirements of all applicable ordinances, regulations, and review and agencies.
Second. We have a motion by trustee Rotten to approve the town center overlay district plan to allow the construction of the covered patio on parcel SU 469-1 with the two conditions as stated. We have a second by trustee Andrews. Any other further questions or discussions from the board members?
Where is there gonna be parking?
Beg pardon?
Parking. Seems like very minimal parking in that area already.
So the, the village several years ago constructed lots, parking lots? So there are several parking lots in that area. There's one right across the street. There's parking spots ahead of, you know, in this area here. But there is, uh, there is parking.
There's two public lots.
Public lots, that's where-
The public lots are connected. One is across the street. The other public lot is connected through Vicry Village. Then there's the additional parking that was placed in Side Street most recently, plus the, the limited parking that's at Station One itself.
The plan says that there's gonna be four new spots. Is that true?
Yeah, I think it was shown on that plan.
Are there any additional points of order? Otherwise, there's been a motion on the floor that's been issued, a motion that's been presented, and that motion has been seconded. No other points of order, no other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. All right, thank you. We are on item 8A, ordinance 2023-04, Swamaco driveway code amendment. This is the second reading, and for this, we get to enjoy the company of director Smits.
Well, thank you. Uh, yeah, this is the second reading for ordinance 2023-04 modifying capture six driveways. We are going to now allow additional to galvanized corrugated metal pipe. We'll allow the HDP or PVC corrugated double wall, smooth interior material as specified under WISDOT 530 corrugated plastic pipe culverts. And that will allow also, in conjunction with that, will allow the metal, the plastic, or the PVC end walls as required as well. So tonight would be the second reading to approve this into our village, our municipal code. And I think there's some residents out there waiting to get this approval so they can get going.
So this is obviously just the addition of the PVC corrugated double wall?
That is correct. Yep. So corrugated metal still allowed, still recommended in certain conditions, but then the PVC and HDP will also be recommended in, you know, other conditions that have more water exposure, closer to the bay, any wet areas in the village, we'd recommend the plastic over the corrugated, you know, moving forward.
But even in the areas of dry, out in the western part of the village, someone still can-
Yep.
Put a plastic in.
Absolutely. They're both the same in price. There used to be, they used to be a little more expensive for the steel, but right now it's pretty comparable. Actually, plastic's going higher than metal as of recent.
Right.
Are there other questions or discussion for director Smits? If there isn't any, I would offer a motion to approve changing the village's driveway code to read as follows. All culverts within the village right of way shall be, actually, sorry, to include PVC corrugated double wall, smooth interior material as specified under DOT 530, corrugated plastic pipe culverts.
Second.
And I have a second from trustee Rotten. Is there, are there any further questions or discussion? Madam deputy, could I please have a roll call?
Trustee Eckert.
Aye.
Trustee Neto.
Aye.
Trustee Rotten.
Aye.
Trustee Romas.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
Trustee Andrews.
Aye.
President Venrazum.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, item number nine, administrative items. This evening, item 9A, we will start off with policy for waiving fees. Administrator Kaker, if you would.
Thank you. So the village board has discussed in the past establishing a policy for waiving of fees for different things like special event permits, tent permits, et cetera. In my research of neighboring communities, I did not see any formal procedure or policy used to address this type of request. However, the village of Bellevue has their park commission make the final decision on waiving those fees, which is something you could consider. I did find and place in your packet a special event financial support application. I found this from another community in another state that you could use as a template if you wanted something more formal. And more often than not, though, I was finding that special event permit applications were explicitly stating that fees were non-refundable and could not be waived. That doesn't mean you can't do it, but that's what I, what I found in my research. So with that, I'll throw it back to the board for discussion and possible direction.
I'm fine with the way it is now.
I'm gonna have to agree. The more I reflected on it, I realized that it, even though the volunteer firefighters, that organization does do a lot for the village, the reality is, is whether that money goes to the village in fees or whether as supporting the firefighting efforts is sort of irrelevant, just different pot.
The association is different, so that is a little bit different.
Okay.
But with different places coming up, I mean, I, I guess, I wouldn't mind it coming before us.
I agree.
Because it could be way out there, too.
Yep. It should be a one time, we should look at it each time.
Obviously, the fire association's not out there. Those Boy Scouts weren't, you know.
Weren't, weren't out there. What do you mean by not?
Crazy? I don't know. Weird? Scary? You name it.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna say that, you know, after, I will give you, we'll open this up in a second. Um, you know, thinking about this, and I reflected on this as well, and at first I thought, you know, let's give our volunteer firefighters association a break. You know, since thinking about that, I've kind of, I'm, I'm gonna backtrack on it, actually. And I'm gonna say that I don't think we give anyone a break on this. I think that we, the, the charges or the fees are the same, and the reason is precisely for, the reason that trustee Eckert pointed out, if we decide that one person or one organization gets the fee waived and another doesn't, what is that based on? That they're crazy? That I think they're crazy? That you think they're crazy? That somebody else thinks they're crazy? Crazy's subjective, right? I don't think this should be a subjective, subjective decision. The fees and the services of the village apply the same to all. And that's why I'm kind of backtracking on this, and I wouldn't be for any waiver of fees going forward. I'll just see if there's one more question, anything from the board, and then I will turn it over. Any other, anything from the board?
Yeah, I, I also think we should not waive the fees because, and nothing against the firefighter association, nothing against that. But, you know, we have other organizations that we, we don't waive a fee for, and they give money back to the village. You know, HISA, for example, I mean, they, they do give money back to, to us, so.
What fees have we charged to them, though?
Well, when they have their ball tournaments.
Do they pay their fees?
Yeah. And then, you know, they're putting up batting cage right now, and they put one up last year, and, you know, they do give back money to us. So that's, that's why I'm choosing to say there shouldn't be no waiver of fees.
No waiver of fees.
Have they ever asked? They have?
Years ago.
Yeah, not while I was-
So we, so is, the question before us is whether we are gonna waive fees, not necessarily anything on HISA, but-
Yeah.
To waive fees. Is, is there any other discussion from the board? Otherwise, I'd look for a motion to open this.
I do have one question.
Please.
So where do the fee, so if I'm a member of whatever group and I pay a fee, which department does that go into?
It's a general fund.
General fund, okay.
So I still think that we need to look at them because you look at HISA, for example, or the Fire, Fire Association. If they're giving substantial dollars, and our fire department has, they've saved the fire department money on apparatuses, whatever they're purchasing for the fire department. You know, I think we need to look at these fees from time to time. I'm not saying we waive them for everyone. I don't think you base it on who's crazy and who's not crazy. I think you, I think you, you base it on the value add to the village. That's my opinion. I'm one of seven. But I think, you know, when you talk about the fire department and the fire association, or you talk about HISA, you know, if they're giving substantial dollars back to the village, and we are going to stick them with a $20 fee or whatever it is, it just, sometimes it looks bad. It looks bad to those that are volunteering and doing the work.
Okay. It's a lot of money leaving. That doesn't need to be there. The fire department shouldn't have to pay a fee to do what they're doing with their event.
It's not the fire, that's not the fire department.
It's the association, but they're more the guys that keep us all safe.
Oh, where do you draw the line? So I'm not with the fire association. I'm with XYZ. Why do I have to pay and the fire association doesn't? Because they give money? That's not fair.
How is that not fair?
One, it's only, like you said, 20 bucks. But if, why should someone get, i- if they're working for the fire, say, the fire association, if they're giving monies to the village, why does that preclude them from paying a, a nominal fee when I'm doing something that, that will help someone else or, for whatever reason? If we're gonna have something, I believe we should have it straight across the board. And if there is some outstanding mitigating circumstances, then they can come here and they can plead their case. But as far as just waiving it for some and not for others, that's not fair.
Well, you even said if there's a circumstance that could come and plead their case. Isn't that what we're already doing?
Exactly.
That's-
So I'm not for changing anything?
I, I just don't like having, you know, something in there to where it's, well, you can just fill out a form. Pretty much, it needs to be a, a fee. Whatever it is, if there's extraordinary circumstances, fine, we'll listen to it. But as far as that, a fee's a fee.
So am I understanding your position and understanding your position, trustee Eckert, trustee Schneider, that there should be no change to the current policy?
That, yeah.
That's also my position.
Yeah.
Right, that the current policy's-
No change.
That we should look at, case by case. If they want it to come before us, they come before us. If they don't, HISA's never come before us, or they haven't in a long time. Maybe they want it. Maybe they want to come before us. Maybe they want to say, hey, we just spent $5,000 of the village. Really, you're gonna hit us with a $20 fee or whatever it is? You know, I think, I think they allow to come before us and have a discussion, if they want to have a discussion.
So the policy is that there is no policy, and we would just direct our staff to-
There is no policy.
Say, if you want to have your fee waived, you need to submit a letter or a document making that request, and we'll bring it to the next village board for discussion and invite them to the meeting. That is the policy.
So what you, what you're suggesting also would be to utilize this form?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't even use it.
No? Okay.
I, I just think to, to clear, to make it more clear, I don't care which way it goes. I just want it to be consistent. Either everyone pays a fee or no one pays a fee. Then we don't have to have this discussion all the time.
So is it, is, so you're not advocating then that we maintain the current policy, which is if an individual organization wants the fee waived, they would appear before the board or submit a letter making their case? You would not allow that. You would have it? I'm just trying to, I just want to understand your position. Or are you in support of the current policy, which is that there is a fee imposed, and if an individual organization wants that fee waived, they have to appear before the board and request that waiver? That's the current policy, correct? Did I summarize that correctly?
Right.
Current policy is they need to come forward and state their case.
Yes.
And I, and I don't think we've ever just waived fees. We've never just waived-
Administratively, we've never just waived fees. If they request it, we put it on the agenda, and it's a decision for the village board.
That's been the policy, and that's what we've done in the past.
Right. So the firefighters association every year has come before the board and asked for the fee waiver?
Correct.
And we've granted it most years.
I don't have-
Is there any other nonprofit, is there any for-profit organizations that we've ever waived fees for?
Not that I can think of. We did deny the Optimist Club.
So that's a nonprofit? Is that a nonprofit?
I don't know.
I believe so.
Well, it, it pretty much came up because last fall at budget time, we, we kind of discussed this. And, but we just didn't, we didn't really act on it. We talked about, well, maybe we shouldn't, we're always scrambling for, you know, making cuts and this and that, and where to find money and, and things, and-
But the little bit of money that goes for the fee versus the people that are gonna come to our community and spend money at our local businesses, doesn't that mean something? The two, if, if the village can't afford the $200 wipeout the fee for the thousands of dollars that the other businesses in Swamaco are gonna get for $200 versus other businesses?
Then we leave it the way it is and let the, let the organizations come before us.
Leave it the way it is.
So am I hearing no change to the current policy? I believe that's what I'm hearing. Okay.
I'd like to actually offer a motion to open it up.
There was a, yes, thank you.
I'd like to, for public comment, open it up for public comment.
So a motion to open up for public comment by trustee Rotten, and a second by trustee Romas. All those in favor?
No, Snyder.
Snyder. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please come forward, provide your name and address, and share with us what's on your mind.
So Tom Lund, Brown County Supervisor District 25, serving the Swamaco residents. Brown County has waived fees, but only for organizations that do work for Brown County in kind. Like if they, they groom the trails at, at say, the report station camp, then they can use the facility there for a waiver of fee. So, you know, maybe you want to strengthen the policy that say for organizations that do work in kind for the, for the village, you'll waive, you, if they come forward, you'll waive the fee.
And I think we didn't, like, our last one time, we, we did that with the Boy Scout group, that they're gonna do some-
Yeah, because they do like benches or plantings or, or whatever, you know. So, but, but you want to have a consistent thing, so you don't have some group that comes to you and goes, you know, I think we're gonna go to the ACLU against, against Swamaco because they want to waive our fee, and they have no consistent reason. You know what I mean? So that's why the county has a consistent policy.
When you say work in kind, is, is that spelled out as far as what it is or a nominal?
Well, I mean, that, that can go to the department head that, you know, that oversees the, it's usually recreational things. So, you know, they do stuff in parks or at the boat landing or wherever. So, you know, they do stuff in parks or at the boat landing or wherever, you know, that they've done work for us and they continue to do that, like Friends of the Parks or whatever, then we'd waive a fee for their event, because their event is usually going to be to make money to give to, to Brown County in the first place. So, why would we want to charge a fee? Because money's all going to go to the same place.
I, I'm just, I'm just thinking, how, what, where is that line of, where do you say work in kind? Like, Friends of the Park, I'm assuming they clean it up or something like that?
Yeah, they do that kind of thing, or they, they go for improvements in the park, you know.
Okay, so when I.
Friends of the Trails, you know.
What I'm saying is if they did something very small, but it's work in kind, where do you draw that line of?
Well, I mean, if, if it's, if it's a $50 fee or a $100 fee, hopefully they've done work worth that, you know. So, I mean, that's how they would come to us. I mean, the department head would say, yeah, they did this, and that would have cost us, say, $200, $500, $1,000 because of the manpower that takes.
That's exactly what I'm looking for.
So, that's what you would look for.
You justify something, well, you've done $200, I'll waive a $50 fee.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, you know, that's what I'm.
That's the kind of thing.
In a situation like that, if we're, say, dealing with a Boy Scout troop, and they're all miners, and then we look at them and say, okay, if you do $200 worth of work, miners, do we now run into a problem with child labor laws?
No, I don't think so, because you have Eagle Scouts that do projects in your parks. I was a village trustee here, and they would come to us and say, they want to do this in the park, and we would go, yes.
But did you say?
And then if they have scout meetings, I mean, scout meetings used to be at the church. Then the churches got rid of the scouts, you know, last year.
But, did you make a de facto deal with them that if they provide labor?
No, we don't make a de facto deal with them. What we do is, they say what they want to do, and then we know how much that would be. If, if we don't want them to do it, we would tell them, no, we don't want that done. But it's always improvements to the park system in the county that we would like to have done, so.
As long as there's some type of way of evaluating.
Yeah, there's, there has to be a justification. That way, you can't have some group come to you and say, well, we want our, our fee waived. What have they ever done for you? You know what I mean?
And, Tom, I don't think that policy has changed for our village board either. I think it's always been.
No, but I think you might.
It's been consistent.
Yeah, but you might want to put it in writing why you waive the fees, you know, as the policy, that we would consider waiving fees if they do in-kind work for, you know, for the, just, that's what I'm, I'm saying.
I could, I could maybe look at that as if it, if it was worded more along the lines of provides a direct benefit to the citizens of Swamaco.
Yes.
I would remove the statement of work. Just becau, I know you're laughing, but I remember when the Boy Scouts were here, that I had talked with one of them afterwards, and I said, we can't actually do, like, we can't physically do work under your behest or something of that nature, so.
Under your behest, from you, so as directed by you, the village board.
Yeah, you don't direct them to do whatever work. They come with a project, and you, you approve the project. You're not directing them to do anything. You're not saying, well, the Boy Scouts, we're going to need you guys to clean up alongside Jay or Velp Avenue.
Wearing your orange suits.
You know.
That's why I like the, I think you had brought it up, trustee Rodden, the, the direct benefit to the, to the village. I prefer that language over work in kind.
Yeah.
See, I, I'm more of a fan of work in kind, because when we say of direct benefit to the village, who's to determine what is direct benefit to the village? Somebody who doesn't kayak, doesn't want to kayak, doesn't have any interest in kayaking, could care less about a kayak, a kayak, whatever.
Launch.
The kayak, well, I'm thinking about the kayak rack that was built, right?
Oh, okay.
They see no direct benefit to that, right? Somebody who doesn't use the parks or use the trails or doesn't even care about the trails, they see no, no direct benefit. When you talk about in kind, you know, every, every, every state or federal grant that you get basically qualifies, if you, if you get that as a nonprofit, you have to provide in kind, right? So, what that in kind is, is service, either administrative service or some sort of service that equates to a certain dollar value. So, you know, I guess if we were going to toy with this at all, my, my opinion would be to put something, you know, in-kind services to equal the amount of the waived fee, something like that.
President Van Rass.
To meet or exceed.
Exceed, yeah.
In my opinion.
Alex, did you want?
Everything that we do here.
Yeah.
Did you want us to clarify it?
Beneficial to some and not all.
Oh, you're, you're in charge. You're telling me what you want, and we'll do it.
Who, were you?
Trustee Romus just made a really good point, though. I just wanted him to hear, so everyone could hear that. Please say that again.
I just said that anything that we do here benefits, in most times, some and not all. The kayak launch, we've spent taxpayers' money for, benefits people who kayak, right? If we do trails, that'll benefit people who do trails. It's not going to benefit someone who doesn't. So, the service in kind to me is, is helping the group as a whole, or providing a direct benefit to the villages. Swamaco helps the group as a whole.
Okay.
I like the, I'll say, though, I do like the policy as it is, because one of the things I'll just add to this is it allows a group to come in and address their, the board.
I do like that.
And they don't have to come in with a, with a, oh, I got to think of a service in kind, or something like this. They can just come and say, you know what? We do a lot for whatever, wildlife, squirrels, whatever. And I say it because of the animal control, sorry.
Oh, I, I wasn't, I didn't have a problem with the squirrels, but.
But, you know, they do that, and, and we should have the power and flexibility as a board to say, you know what, that matters to the people of Swamaco. So, we'll move forward with that. It's not really, I'll rest.
Well, that's a good point. Trustee Eckert, you were in the middle of a statement.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, you know, we, did you bring it back? Mike, were you the one that brought it back for us to talk about?
No.
I think there were several.
You weren't?
I think there were several of us.
Oh, and you wanted us to talk about it, and do we need clarification? Because I'm fine the way it is now.
I don't need clarification.
But, Tom brings up a good point, too, maybe that would protect ourselves if we did.
You just want to look at that, because there are people out there.
Well, we have an operating policy.
Are willing to go to the ACLU or other organizations and make you look bad, and you don't want to, you want to have your policy very straightforward, so. So, you know, when you waive a fee, it's, you have a reason to do it, not just because you like this group over that group, because that's arbitrary, and you don't want to be arbitrary.
Right. And I think, again, I'll state for the record that I think the village as a whole, and this board as a whole, has always waived fees based upon like-kind, based upon benefit to the village.
Yeah.
Never waived it because we liked one group or another.
Do we need a statement or two saying that, though?
Well, that's what I was just asking, Alex.
So, what we can do is, there is a village board operating policy. You could just add a sentence or two.
Yeah.
That speaks to, if you're looking to have your permits waived, this is the process. You submit documentation to the village. Next village board meeting, the village board will take it up for action. Generally, you know, criteria for having the fee waived is X, Y, Z, based on the conversations you've been having. I can bring that back to a future board meeting for you guys to adopt that into your village board operating policy, not necessarily in ordinance.
Okay.
That works for me.
Yeah.
That'd be nice, because then it's, it's right out there.
Yeah.
Things even, unless you have.
Do you, do you have enough, or do you need?
I'm clear.
Thanks, Tom.
You're clear.
Good advice.
I'll make a motion to close for the comment.
So, we have a motion by trustee Rodden. Thank you, supervisor Lund. We have a motion by trustee Rodden to close open session, and we have a second from trustee Schneider. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries seven zero.
And Alex, you're not looking for a formal.
He said he got it.
No, I'll come back to a future meeting with policy language.
All right. Item number nine B, park impact fees. Administrator Caker?
Thank you. So, I spoke with our attorney, who indicated that park impact fees can be used to pay for capital costs, to instruct, expand, or improve parks, playgrounds, and land for athletic fields. Now, the word improve is another example of why there are so many attorneys in the world, and welcome, rich. Our previous legal counsel did not believe we could use impact fees for things like the replacement of park equipment, but our current counsel believes we can. So, it's a bit of a shift in mentality for us. We always thought that the park impact fees could only be used for new capital projects, and now this would speak more to, if we have playground equipment that needs to be replaced, you could use park impact fees for those. What is not debatable is that impact fees cannot be used for the operation or maintenance of a public facility that is coming out of state statutes. And then the, just for some background, park impact fees were reinstituted by the village back in 2008 at the cost of $300 per RU, and this number has not changed since. And I did some research about neighboring municipalities and what their park impact fees are. Bear in mind that they may have other fees that we don't, and we may have fees that they don't. But the range for park impact fees were anywhere between 300 and 1,500 per RU. So, trustee Andrews had requested that we have a discussion about it. This is the background information on it. I'll throw it back to the village board for discussion and possible direction.
Yeah, and I, I brought this up just because it hasn't been changed since 2008, and, you know, many of us, some of, most of us were here on, when we had to start replacing all the fences at a few of the parks and this and that, and before we know it, we had, we had a lot of money spent that did not all come out of the, the park fund.
But that's kind of why.
Projects, and we, we just need to adjust for cost. I mean, at just $300 a pop, I mean, we're falling behind in the game when we have to replace fencing and replace playground equipment that is shot. It's not safe. So, I, I think we need.
Raising that impact fee.
To have an adjustment.
Raising that impact fee is going to make us fall further behind if we can't, if we can't use those fees to maintain anything. Because that's, that's where we fall behind. That's where the discussions come in at, at the board meetings, because we have to do all this replacement, the fencing, the tennis courts, and we were, whether, can we use impact fees for that? Or can't we? If we can't, those fees should absolutely not go up. Otherwise, we're making ourselves further behind.
Well, it's, we, we can use them for that.
Can we?
Yes.
Absolutely?
Yes.
Yes.
For fencing, for tennis court resurfacing?
Yes.
We're replying.
Absolutely.
We're not just maintaining, we're not just doing a repair on it. It's a complete.
We, so, but we, we were told before we were not allowed to.
And that's why I just, I went over that, that there's been a change in.
Okay, but I hear a lot of things and then come to realize a couple of years later, oh, now we can't.
Well, different attorneys have different opinions.
I have a problem with it, because I don't want to hear something different in a couple of years, and then we're stuck. And we're stuck maintaining more that we can't afford.
Well, I think this is a broader, a broader picture, because, Mr. Dunks, aren't we one of the highest for fees when it comes to building a home? All, when you combine all of our fees together, aren't we one of the higher municipalities in the area?
In the sewer and water served areas, yes. In the rural areas, no.
Okay.
But in a rural area, you shouldn't need a park, you got a yard.
Well, but we still, we still have parks.
Community parks.
I mean, we look at what we just approved tonight. That's eight lots, right?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Just work with me here.
Okay.
So, the park is right down the road, and that park needs new equipment, needs new bleachers, needs this or that. And so, I think as long as we are in line as a whole, when we look at all of our fee structures, I, I think we're, I think we're okay. Now, here's the caveat to that, is these fees are always charged at a plot signing, or at a, a plot finalization.
At a land division, yes.
Right, so this isn't really a home being built, per se. So, that's something else for us to think about, that this, the developers are paying this. Now, that will be a pass-through to the potential property owners.
They're, they're paying for it in the price of the property or the price of the home, sure?
So.
Every time you create a lot, you create the ability to build another house. Every home that's built in Swamaco has the potential of bringing in children. The more children you bring in, the more that are going to get involved in soccer or baseball, so your fields are going to start getting, in more demand. So, you're using those parkland fees to also meet that demand with your Calaver master plan. If, if these had been $600 five years ago, you'd be following through on the, the plan that Nick brought forward a couple of meetings ago, because you, the money would have been there, period. You wouldn't have had to worry about going out and, and finding ways to find those monies to do the stuff that you have put into plans for the future of Swamaco.
So, and sorry for speaking so much, but if we look at Howard at $1,225, that are our neighboring community, Pulaski is our other neighboring community. I don't see Flintville in here, or.
Flintville's part of us.
Yeah, that's us.
Sorry.
Pittsfield.
Pittsfield, wow. Pittsfield.
They didn't fill out the survey that the Home Builders Association put together.
So, my point about Howard is that hasn't stopped one development, and they continue to develop. I mean, they are, they are four times our amount, and it hasn't stopped one development. So, I'm in favor of changing it, just how high. I mean, I think we have to be at least aligned with Pulaski.
Oh, I agree. We, we at least have to go to six.
I, I just, I've sat here many times and been assured of something, and then come back around and, oh, no, you can't use it on that. Now, if we can't use it to resurface a tennis court, to do any of the fencing, which we struggled to replace, any of that is a struggle to replace, and if your mind has changed, that suddenly, we're going to stick ourselves further. And I'm, I need more reassurance if I were to want it to go up one penny.
I don't think you're going to get 100% reassurance, because we fire town council, sorry, but, and we have a new lawyer or a new attorney firm representing us, and they may say no.
So, then I say, no, I am not for raising it.
It's all interpretation of a, of a state statute.
So, let me understand why, why, trustee Eckert, let me understand why you're not in favor of raising it. What, what?
Because if those higher impact fees force us to put in more infrastructure, that's more infrastructure to replace.
Take care of.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it's more people to take care of them. It's more infrastructure in the future to replace.
It's more.
And if the rules change on us again, like they usually do, we're going to be even further stuck than we are.
Where, so, so hypothetically, if the rules change on us again, let's say we raise the fee to $600, and the rules change on us again, and we have this parkland dedication fee fund, which is sitting there, and the rules change, we can't use it on park equipment, and we've got this, this, this budget of funds, this, this dollar value of funds, what happens to those dollars then if we don't use them?
After a certain number of years, it gets refunded back to the property owner.
To the developer, right?
I believe the state statute is property owner.
Hmm. Is it property? Yes, property owner, that's right. Okay. So, it goes back to the property owner, the person who bought the property and built the house, unless we put it in infrastructure?
Right.
Is there any demand for us in the parkland dedication fee fund that we use those funds and have to do something with them?
I didn't quite follow that.
So, what's the current balance of our parkland dedication fee?
Hundred, $10,000-ish.
Okay. Is there any demands on us that say that we absolutely have to use those funds for something?
No.
And if we don't use those funds and they expire at the end of how many years?
We just talked about this eight.
I know we did.
Eight years.
Twenty-seven is the first.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
Then these, these funds go back to the property owner.
That, or it's the developer, but for the purpose of this discussion, I don't think it matters who it goes.
Last question. So, and this is, I know the answer, but just for clarification. So, any decision on the use of these parkland dedication fees, who's make, who makes that decision in terms of how those funds should be used?
The village board.
So, my point to you is, you wanted reassurance. You asked for reassurance. No one can give you the reassurance that another legal team won't come forward and say, no, you can't use those funds anymore, but the reassurances that you have is, A, the funds don't have to be used. B, if the funds aren't used, they go back to the property owner, which is, which is great. And the last thing is, if those funds are to be used, you, as a board member or anyone. on this board who you would have access to makes a decision on how those funds are used. So those are the elements of, maybe that's not enough reassurance, but that's the reassurance that's available.
And I saw Kay cringing because the sheer amount of work involved in returning those fees would be probably pretty complex.
I think so because I believe the refund goes to the person who actually paid the fee.
And if they've moved-
You gotta track them down.
We have to track them down. And I believe there is something about interest that would have accrued on that fee. I'm not quite sure on that, but that might also have to be-
And what if it's a fraction?
Funded. It would be a lot of work, one that I would, we have discussed by going through that parkland dedication fee spreadsheet that I had put together and showing you how far everything had been expended, that we keep tabs on that, that those funds are used before, used appropriately before they, the eight years expires.
So it goes back to the payer of the fees? That is straight from state statute.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, the developer.
I don't think we'll get into a situation now where we have to worry about that because with, what do we have, seven ball, ball diamonds?
We have lots of improvements that can be made.
And over the course of time, I mean, we know eventually we have to, we'll have to replace fencing at one of them and we'll have to replace fencing at another and-
In four years when the first one's-
And we might have to purchase more bleachers possibly and I, I don't think we're going to have an issue on using the money.
So I think, again, let's get back, I, I think more solely to, you know, do we want to raise them and how much? You know, you look at the survey and you say, okay, if we're 750 to 800, we're in the ballpark, being in the middle of the pack with our fees, parkland fees. You know, and I, I like what Steve Dunk said too, because as you build more houses, you have more children, you have more people, and even adults, you have more people utilizing our parks. And that all costs money because, you know, every time someone slams against a fence, every time someone uses the bleachers, they break down. And I think it makes sense to, to raise it. If we haven't raised it since 2008, you know, it's, and we are sitting down at the bottom of the barrel for that particular fee structure. I think it makes sense.
We're going to be sitting there at budget time once again and we're going to have to try to figure out how to pay for things and how to pay for more staff and it's just the same stuff over and over again.
May I have the floor?
Sure.
The president.
Oh, by all means.
He had a comment.
Administrator Caker.
Yes.
The village of Swamaco, we have in here that instituted this back in 2008 at the price of $300 per REU. So that's $300 a lot.
Correct.
Right? So that doesn't really take into, take into, I guess, the fact, probably wrong word, the, the actual price of the home being built on the lot. Do you have any kind of data that compares the median housing costs from 2008 to 2023?
I do not.
Okay.
I mean, you can take-
My point would be-
Go ahead.
President Van Rosen, that back in 2008, $300 for that lot was a significant amount of money. We have not kept up with inflation and, excuse me, I had the floor. And to administrator Dunk, or director Dunk's point is because we did not keep up with inflation, now we're in a spot where we cannot keep up with the improvements or replacements of, so I believe that we should increase that fee in appropriate amount, appropriate amount.
So if we do it by inflation, what is it, about 500,000 or?
Unfortunately, I don't know what the actual difference in prices are. But I'm relatively sure that by changing it to around that $700, $800 range, that we will be well below that inflation impact. And the other side of this coin is that when people move in and build a house and like, I can't remember director Dunk saying, I think, so this was a good point, I felt that they're bringing in potentially children and they're going to actually use that resource more than us old pratchety people. So I think the value is actually well placed on who's paying for those fees. Thank you, President Van Rosen.
I just did some-
I cede the rest of my time.
I just did some quick math as, as you were so eloquently laying this out. So the quick math that I did, if, if you just look at a very minimum, you know, 3% increase, which is, you know, cost of living increase year over year for 14 years, you come out with, you know, pretty close to, not pretty close, you come up with over $500 that this fee, fee should currently be over $500. Now that being said, right, that being said, inflation hasn't always been 3% year over year. And also, how long is it going to be before you set this fee? So if you set this fee today at $500, then you're not accounting for the cost of increases in the upcoming years. Are you going to wait another 15 years to set this fee, to reset this fee? Because then your number has to be-
We're still lagging.
Much closer to like $1,000 right now. If you're going to wait five years to do this, then I would advocate for that. I think trustee Rodden said six to $800.
Seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred.
Okay.
May I have the floor?
By, by all means.
So another thing that we should also keep in mind is that with the improvements now being permitted to these parks, have we done a disservice to the people that had paid the fee before? Because the parks are no longer adequate or there are some issues that need to be repaired, but we cannot spend the money to do it because we know, we did not, we were not financially forced, we didn't have enough financial foresight before to take this action.
It's not, I don't think it was a financial foresight. I think it was more of a direction by our legal counsel that said that we had a, sorry.
That's okay, I cede my time.
I think it was more a direction by our legal counsel to indicate that we can only use this for new improvements. So we have gone back through this and our legal counsel has indicated that we can use it for full repairs on, on current. So I think this opens up and this furthers our dilemma with Calavera Master Plan because, you know, if this money can be utilized in other areas, I think it's, I think it's imperative to start looking at some of the things that do need to be replaced that we've put off in our parks because we don't have the funding, because we didn't think we could use this funding. And that's exactly what this funding's supposed to be for. So I'm, I'm in 100% favor of, yes, I think you look at what inflation should be, but I think we also need to look at where's all the communities around us and how is that impacting them as a community on being able to develop? Pulaski is still developing like crazy. We all know Howard is developing. Ask Robinon, they don't have any more land to develop. But Hobart, I think, is also behind times and I think they're developing a lot lately too. So I'm in full favor of, of raising it to at least 750 or possibly $800 for REU. And what would that be effective?
Well, it's whenever the board would like to do that, we would have to come back with a resolution to update the fee schedule. That would be the formal process to get an impact fee amended. I'd also like to just throw out an idea. In my previous township, we had a inflationary trigger on all of our impact fees. So every year, instead of having to revisit impact fee, you would just increase it by whatever that inflationary number was, whether you want to use the WERC CPI or some other measure that these automatically get updated to stay up with the times, might be appropriate in this circumstance.
So maybe if I throw this to you, Alex, that we direct this back to you to find out, you know, what? If we use just a, an inflationary number, what you think this should really, what the range should be right now? If we use, you know, this index, it, it should be this based upon our 300 to what is now? Or if we use this index?
Wouldn't he have to go back 15 years worth of doing that?
Indices are all there.
He would, he'd have to do a time value calculation.
Can you?
There's a number of ways you could do that, I'll, I'll let you know.
Is that fair? And then moving forward that we stay on top of this on a yearly basis?
It's, you're, you're kicking yourself. It's, it's going to be a bad thing in a few years, like so many things. It's just another way of us to spend more money and to wonder where it's going to come from next. It's, it's like an endless cycle that nobody can seem to break.
Or actually have the money to repair our parks. You know, again, I go back to the fact that we have never been able to utilize these funds and that's why they've been sitting out there for so long. If we could utilize these funds, if our park directors could utilize these funds in the past to fix fences, to resurface and take care of the pickleball courts, if, if some of this funding could have gone towards that, this funding would have been in line and we wouldn't have this huge balance sitting in this account.
We already went through that and we already fixed them and now you're talking about putting new stuff in and then the rules will change and then we'll have to go back through and not know how to pay for them again.
Hold on, I'm not talking about putting new stuff in, I'm talking about taking care of the stuff that we have.
You're not talking about the soccer fields because that's what they're talking about?
I don't think-
That's new infrastructure.
I don't think this, no, no, this does not need to be utilized strictly for infrastructure anymore. This can be utilized-
That's going to be the first thing it's used for though.
Well-
That would have to be a decision by the board.
Well, I think they've decided.
I, I think there is, I think there's plenty of things now that this, and I would 100% advocate for it. What are a list of things in our parks that we've put off that probably should be taken care of?
You know, coming, coming up, I mean, I'm, I mean, Nick can speak. I'll, I'll just say one comment. I know there is fencing at one of the ball diamonds at Calaveria Park that definitely needs some attention fairly soon, you know, within a couple of years. And we've had that estimated at $25,000 and let's, let's face it, it's not going to be $25,000 anymore. It, it's going to be 35 or 40.
I think that was an item in 2018 or 2019, we discussed those, that particular fencing.
We better do it now before the rules change.
So-
You have three diamonds at Calaveria that could use fencing tomorrow.
Okay, this, so this, let's, let's, I, I appreciate this and I think we all appreciate this, but I think we're getting into the, the actual issues here that this, these funds could be used for, which is great. But first we have to decide if we're going to look at these funds or if we're going to entertain the idea of, of, of these fees. And I hear there are some difference of opinion here, you know, that, that going down this road, utilizing these fees, increasing these fees is only going to lead us down the road of purchasing additional things, additional, putting additional things in our parks that we're going to have to take care of and we won't have that money in the future. That's, that's what I'm hearing. Did I summarize that? And then I hear other arguments which are before us, which is stating, hey, you know what, if we had done this 14 years ago, we would have the money to do these things and we wouldn't have to struggle right now. So if we do this now, maybe we won't struggle in the future. There's two convergent arguments. So those are still on the table, those are still open for discussion. The issue that is at discussion right now is the increase in fees. Should we increase the fees and how much should the, would that increase be? So what I heard, that's what's before us today? Am I correct?
Yes, let me, let me provide this. I'll make a motion. How would I direct a motion?
Direct something back to staff?
I would offer a motion to direct staff to look at several tables, several indexes to figure out what the fee schedule should be and come back to the board with a revised proposed fee range. Is that-
For just the park impact fee?
For just park impact fees.
Hold on, does everybody want an increase? Does anybody, does, does everyone think an increase is warranted here?
We, we don't know yet, we don't know.
That's my motion.
Okay.
He would, the motion is to go back and look at what that increase would be, then bring it back to the board. At that point, we're going to have to make a decision whether we increase that fee or not.
Well, we threw some numbers out of, you know, 750 or 8. I mean, do we want to give some direction just kind of right away?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I, I think he, I think our administrative staff understands our direction.
But we can vote on the motion, there's a motion on the floor that's been, there's a motion that's been made and a motion that's been seconded. That motion is to direct back to staff to look at the current fee range, come back utilizing cost of living tables. What was the WERC?
Well, there's a number of indicators.
Number of indicators to identify what a potential range could be for a park impact fee. Bring that back to the board for the board to look at that fee and decide whether an increase is warranted going forward. So again, the motion which is on the floor and seconded is a referral back to staff to look at what a potential fee range could be. Okay? Would be good with that? So based on that, let's have a vote, okay? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have-
I lose my-
Six, motion carries six to one. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Can you, can you attempt to get Pittsfield to answer the survey?
I can reach out to them directly, sure.
Thank you.
Those are Home Builders Association survey now that we asked.
But still, he can reach out to Pittsfield.
We'll see them tomorrow at Halo.
Right, might be able to talk to them tomorrow. All right. Item number nine, C, Transportation Alternatives Program. Administrator Caker.
All right, thank you. So the Transportation Alternatives Program is a federal, federal grant program to assist with funding things like sidewalks, trails and bicycle facilities. I believe it was trustee Andrews who requested that we have a brief discussion on this. I'll trust that you all read the memo in your packet, so I won't read all of it, but I will hit on the highlights. So the TAP program, it's an 80/20 split, so the village would be responsible for 20% of the cost. Funding will likely not be available until 2027 at the earliest. Applications for that year's funding will open this June and then close in the fall. If the board wants to pursue this funding, we as staff would need to know which route or routes to target so we can better, get, get better clarity as to the requirements of the funding and get cost estimates. Ideally, we would match up a route in our latest trail plan and the five-year road construction schedule. Right now, the only high priority trail route that is in our five-year road plan is White Pine, which is scheduled to be done in 2024. So if that was the target, we would potentially have to delay completing that road until at least 2027 if funding was secured. But all routes are on the table for the board to discuss or if there is no interest from the board to pursue TAP funding, now would be a good time to know that. So I'll throw that back to the board for comments or questions.
Apparently, we're in the mood to spend a lot of money tonight because if you're going to go up to DOT standards, even that 20% turns out being more than if we were to redo this stuff on our own. And the TAP funds, like it says here, the TAP funds for trails must be targeted toward daily utilitarian transportation rather than recreation. You're not even doing a rec trail here. You're just trying to turn this into a damn city. And I did not move into a city. You're going to need buses now, you're going to need, I, I don't know. You guys are ruining the village with this crap.
Just to be clear, you're not directing that at me, correct?
No.
This was requested from the board.
You guys.
You guys.
You spend too much.
You don't, no, I'm not, I'm going to-
Go. Let's hear it.
No, because, you know, you, you directed that at you guys, so you're, you're personally directing that at a number of people on this board. And, you know, I appreciate your viewpoints, but I don't appreciate is your gross generalizations that you make. What I don't appreciate is, is, I don't appreciate the gross generalizations and I don't appreciate the personalization. This, I'm going to leave it at that.
We all make a lot of difficult decisions when it comes to the budget time and we're always looking at the bottom line, the dollar. We make cuts and, but yet we do have people that move into our community that want to see some improvements, you know, with maybe a safer, when, when a section of road is done, can we just go a little bit wider and, and have a bike lane at least?
This is not talking about a little bit wider.
I'm speaking right now.
Okay.
When I'm done, you'll have your chance. And it's just, it's, some of this stuff is for safety so a person can walk or bike on a roadway that maybe it's only a three-foot shoulder, but it's better than a one-foot shoulder. So those are, that's why I brought this up. I'm just looking for some, if, if it works, it works and if it's, if it doesn't make financial And if it's, if it doesn't make financial sense, I mean, I'm not going to support something that doesn't make financial sense.
Okay, this does not make financial sense. Where in this would it say the DOT standards would be only a shoulder? They're not asking for a shoulder here. They're asking for a lot more infrastructure, very costly infrastructure. This is a very expensive road to go down.
So does it qualify if we do, let's, for an example, we do Riverside from County B to Velp. And when, when that road, when it's time to be redone, and we put a four-foot wide paved shoulder onto that, does that, does this project qualify for that?
I'm not sure it would. Andy, do you have any?
It would not qualify for that. There's minimums, so typically, if you're going to do, uh, bike lanes, you have to have two-way bike lanes. Or if you're going to do an off-street trail, it has to be usually a minimum of eight feet. It might be even 10 feet wide.
So with a bike lane on each side, how, why does it need to be?
I think the minimum allowable is four feet. I think four feet's a minimum paved width that you, that would, this program would accept. Uh, two-way though, one on each side.
Yeah, okay. Well, there's one example. It could, could potentially be used for that if we have enough roadway width to do it.
Oops, sorry, but a big part of it is following your local comprehensive plan. So if your comprehensive plan doesn't show, so ours shows a bike lane, I'm guessing from B to Velp Avenue on Riverside. So whatever we would apply for, if we were to apply for a section of road, it should, uh, follow the compact that we have set forward and approved.
Trustee Rodden, you hit something?
Well, I'm just trying to understand just what you just said, Andy, is understanding what the requirements, you know, you, you look at the word utilitarian transportation. I think that definition would, would be regards to utilizing it for going to work, going to school, not just recreation. So when we talk about utilitarian, I think transportation, it means more so using it on a daily basis to commute. I don't think it means buses. I don't think it means anything but more robust use of bicycles or walking to and from. But if you look at just our, what would qualify, Velp Avenue, I mean, and we look at what infrastructure we already have in place, you know, what loops would you like to close? Well, Harbor Lights, you know, has a trail to nowhere. There's a couple trails that aren't completed, you know, to at least get some form of loop. But I think that would be in conjunction, any of those loops would be in conjunction of the, with the county because they're all county roads. So I think, you know, to do White Pine, just to put a, a bike path down White Pine, I don't think that makes sense in my, in my opinion. But you look at closing loops or actually making loops, um, I think that makes a little bit more sense. And again, we're looking out 2027 at least at a minimum. You know, and I don't even know if we could get all of our stuff together to be able even find a road to even apply for, uh, in that timeframe before fall.
And there's.
I mean, what road would you, what road would you suggest, Alex?
Well, you would, I mean, what we're looking for is, is there a route that you want to complete or start? And then we would look more into it. We did a very cursory, high-level look at this TAP funding. It's very complicated. And before we spend too much time, we want to make sure that there's interest on the board to pursue something.
Because I think if you're going to do something, let's say White Pine, let's just use that for an example. You know, the traffic on both sides for bicycle use, that would probably be the only logical thing to do. You're not going to do an off-road, uh, actual eight-foot bicycle path in that area. It just doesn't make sense. But if you widen that road to be able to use traffic on both sides, that would be a potential. You know, I, I do struggle with it a little bit because I just don't think we have the infrastructure or the need or the ability, because any of those main paths include the county. Any of the main loops you want to close includes the county other than Harbor Lights, bringing it out to Velp.
We looked at Harbor Lights. We looked at Harbor Lights, and it looked, I mean, right down to.
Well, you have a path.
Acquiring property, I mean, we'd have to acquire property.
Right.
We'd find, we'd have to find where and how we would even get that infrastructure in there. Because these aren't big front yards at all. We got really big backyards, but very small front yards. You have to acquire property to extend it to the extent you're talking about.
That's what I.
Especially with the DOT standards.
That's what I'm talking about, Michelle, is that, is that our str, infrastructure out here is going to be very difficult. Velp would be very difficult. Look at the, look at the room we have in front yards in Velp Avenue. You know, there's just not the room. When you look at Harbor Lights, that end of Harbor Lights, the J-end of Harbor Lights, there's already a path there. You know, there's, the bridge was designed, the new bridge, the overpass, was designed to have a path on it. You know, so it's unfortunate that all of those things don't connect, or they would never connect. I, I don't know what the right answer is, but I'm, I'm just trying to be logical going, do we have anywhere that would make sense to be able to even tap, no pun intended, but tap into this funding?
May I have the floor?
Yes, sorry.
You're good. Uh, so.
Trustee Roma says the floor.
Thank you for recognizing me for two minutes. Okay, so, Director Spence, quick question. Is this, is this the same program that we looked at, at, uh, for the Harbor Lights?
We, we looked at the BIL funding for that.
Okay. So, but is it under?